This conference will now be recorded.
Roll call.
Commissioner Eastman?
Here.
Commissioner Ganger?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here. Here, all those wishing to participate in the opening prayer, one to the allegiance, please stand. Okay, let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us to make the best use of our own. We are divisive opinions here, yet we wish to reach agreement satisfactory to all. Please share your wisdom with us to help us do right by all concerns. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
My plea is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
It's not.
Do we want to delete that old business or just switch it out for that archaeological study?
Well, I think when we get to that point, we can just...
All right, sounds good. Sounds good. Saying no additions or deletions to the agenda, do we have a motion?
Approve the agenda.
So move. Motion's been made and seconded for the approval of the agenda. Any more discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next up, recognition of visitors. The Suicide Prevention of Cali County Coalition.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I'm going to wear a different hat today. I am the chairperson for the Suicide Prevention of Cali County Coalition, and we're just going to make a proposal to the commission today. Actually relocate a little bit. So to let you guys know what Suicide Prevention of Cali County Coalition, which is a mouthful, what we are, are a collection of concerned and caring Cali County residents. We're all motivated to reduce and eliminate suicides in Cali County. The focus of the group up to this point has been about creating awareness to the problems throughout our community through community interaction and a social media presence. We have about 70 members, which is outstanding for any kind of coalition. And the representation that we have within that coalition is pretty diverse. We have mental health care, we have representation from our local schools, we have administrators, teachers, school counselors in there, first responders, so not only law enforcement, but we have fire EMS as well, church organizations, college representation, juvenile justice, family and parent survivors, and even just more than that. So we have a large group who have really come together for the cause of reducing the number of suicides in Cali County. So what we want to focus on today is the West Chestnut Bridge area. The bridge and the surrounding area has been a hotspot over the last three to four years for mental health practice and suicides. We've lost at least teenagers over the last three to four years in the area of that bridge. Surveying the current environment of the bridge, it's obvious that the condition would not improve, the outlook of our citizens that are seeking or going to that place. So really what we wanted to do was look at it, see what we could do to make some upgrades as a coalition, so that way if people are drawn to that area or the bridge itself, that they would actually feel more uplifted. And we also want to show that, we want to put resources out there such as the Suicide Prevention Hotline Number. So this is kind of the overall area. Since that roadway was actually open back up, because if you remember, a few years ago, we didn't have the park area that accessed the river, and that was closed to traffic, and it was just the walkway, it was just the trail. Now Chestnut Avenue is open to traffic because people can drive down to that Chestnut Park area and access the river there. Where we're wanting to focus our efforts in cleaning up the area and maybe making some improvements is about a 55-foot area that's going to be east of the barricade. So there's a barricade that blocks the bridge, and there's the entrance to the park. So we really want to try to focus our efforts and adopt that area that's about 55 feet there. So the current conditions, this is kind of overall looking west toward the bridge and toward the barricade. As you can see, the weeds are kind of grown up, especially to the west of the entrance to the park there. This is a view more toward the north and west. Really, the railings that we had that obviously protecting traffic a long time ago when that was actually an open roadway are still there, and they're pretty much in disrepair at this point. That's a view of the barricade itself. I don't know if it's adequate for keeping traffic from going out onto the bridge. I have reached out to the county to try to work through, you know, some of those issues as far as trying to upgrade that barricade and make it more presentable. And it's my understanding that the county actually has jurisdiction of what it looks like. So obviously, that's something that we've reached out to them, and we're in the process of trying to work through some of those issues. And then just walking in, just in that 55-feet area, not only the tall weeds and the undergrowth, but there's a lot of trash out there that's accumulated over time. And obviously, people have saw it as a place to dump some of the refuse. I think those are all leaves and garden waste at this point. So looking at some short-term goals from the coalition, and especially working in conjunction with HOGMOP Ministries, first and foremost, what we're asking for is for the commission to give us permission to go out and clean up that area. So no real huge improvements right away. What we'd like to do is get a group of people out there to pick up the trash, you know, knock down the weeds and cut any undergrowth, so that way we can evaluate exactly what area we have there to work with. We want to work with the county to refurbish the barricade, make it more presentable, and make it effective as a barricade to make sure that people aren't going to drive through that. We want to provide the Suicide Lifeline Number on signage, and that would be obviously after our first phase of just cleaning up the area. We want to install a senior street-type positive messaging on the existing roadway. So that 55 feet from the barricade to the entrance to the park, we would like to be able to use that asphalt area to put some positive messaging. If people are going in that direction, they're going to have those positive things. Install a plaque in conjunction with HOGMOP Ministries, and they are represented here tonight. And so this would obviously be one of the later phases. In talking with Andrew, some of those plans for making improvements, such as plaques and signage, and then even exploring some solar lighting options, we'll take that to the beautification committee and run that through them.
Chief, what is, can you, or whoever's here on HOGMOP, can you kind of give us an overview of what that is?
So we're a Christian-based organization, and HOGMOP stands for Hooked on God Ministry of Business. So we're a goddess that we meet every Tuesday night, study the Bible, and we just believe in going out into the communities and preaching the gospel of Jesus Christ and being a light to the community. We've been all over the United States and all over the world preaching our gospel, and we're based here in Arc City, and we just want to be a light to our community.
So this is a national organization too?
Yes, we're all over.
Okay, great.
Thanks to the founding plaintiffs here in Arc City.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Hi, vacation story. I went over a bridge over the Rio Grande River in New Mexico and happened to see the lifeline, Suicide Lifeline Number, but there was also a phone.
Oh, there was a phone there.
There was a direct line, and apparently it's a very big gorge, nothing like this. But I was wondering why we can't include some kind of phone or...
Yeah, that would be. Hot phone to whoever, you know, is on call or something.
So that's really what we're working for in the short term. First and foremost, we would like to get out as soon as possible, like within the next week or two, winter permitting, and make some improvements to that area by cleaning it up and have a work party.
That's a good idea.
Larry, I got a question for you. Do we have to make a motion, or can we just say yes to make for this? I mean, since they're honest what they want to do or how we need to do that.
I understand you're assessing permission right now. It's miniatures, so no coupling with anything, just can we go out and do it?
Well, but they may want to mark that out, do some signage out there too later on or something, you know, on the roadway or whatever.
Your permission's probably fine, but on the other hand, I will say this, that there's never any harm in taking formal action on something.
Okay.
So, Larry, that's great.
Yeah, I mean, there is never... So I think that what we would like to do is, first and foremost, do the cleanup work, but any signage or lights or plaques or those kind of things, I think that we'll run through the beautification committee just to make sure that they're on board with any improvements that we want to make out there. So at this point, we just want to get out and do some work.
And then from there, they can come to us for a motion, or what you want to do in a motion, and we can approve through the motion.
See, it helps when you always have somebody well-prepared.
Yeah.
Been here before.
I have another question. The park down there is waterways that the kayak people...
And the park itself is adopted by a different group, and then there's the...
And there's a couple of different organizations that... Right. Yeah.
And there's airboats coming in too, and they're to the park?
Well, there's an official kind of a lease or adoption of the park, and I can't remember the name of the organization. Yeah.
And they were supposed to take care of the park, I thought. Have they been doing that or not? You don't know?
Pretty much the same.
Do you have any financial backing?
Yes, we do. So the coalition is a standalone entity. We receive donations and grants through, and we're actually in the umbrella of the Legacy Foundation. So we have our own funding. In fact, Officer Texhorn recently received a grant through Humanizing the Badge, which is a nonprofit organization, of $1,000 to go toward Suicide Prevention Coalition. So we have our own funds.
Sounds like a great idea.
One more question. The old bridge is out there. Has there been any talk about removing 20 feet of it so people cannot walk out on there on the bridge?
So my discussions with the county in talking about barricades, it then sparked a discussion about what to do with the bridge, and so they're taking care of that. I don't know if they're considering around destroying the whole thing and removing it or sections of it, but they're working on that.
I did have a conversation with the county administrator, and he was asking about the infrastructure that we have on their water pipes, and we're no longer using them, so they're planning on removing it at some point.
Some of it, okay. All right, thank you.
So in the longer term, what we would want to do is we officially adopt that area is make frequent checks of the area to make sure that it's clean and in good repair out there. Obviously, if we end up painting senior street-type messaging on the roadway, we'll go out and check and make sure that it's still looking good, free of graffiti and those kind of things. So we'll make that commitment to make sure that it looks good at all times. Add other signs as desired or as needed. Place a sign indicating that the coalition has adopted the area, so that'll be something that we approach through the beautification committee about possibly putting another sign that basically says, hey, this is ours. And even with a possible lighting option. So obviously, we're looking at something solar, maybe similar to what we have out of the popular walking trail, just a single light possibly to eliminate the plaque that HOGMOP Ministries could be putting out there with scripture. So that way, it kind of draws the attention, especially at night, that somebody is going to go eat it because it's lit. And so that's going to be kind of the idea behind it.
Well...
And that's pretty much all I have for you as it pertains to the Suicide Prevention Coalition. Do you guys have any other questions or concerns?
I think it's an amazing undertaking. And so very proud of the citizens and the entities that have come together to do this.
Yeah, and I would have to say that the members of the coalition are fantastic. They're very highly motivated. Everybody is behind the idea of reducing suicides. So many people are touched individually by suicide, either directly or indirectly, and I think that that's kind of the fuel on that fire to get out and do something. So it's really been a blessing to be involved in that.
Thank you.
I guess you have our blessings to go clean it up. Yeah, thank you. You want us to make a motion just to make it leave?
Better, Larry?
I don't know that you need to. I mean, and especially in light of what he said about bringing it up before the beautification, bringing it back to you.
That's what needs to be done, I think.
Sounds good, that's fine, yeah, I'm good, sounds good.
You're working through one, Andy, to bring it back to us, see, that way, beautification foundation needs to be looking at this too.
Any comments from the audience who are not on the agenda? Saying none, we'll move on to the consent agenda, which is the December 7, 2021 regular minutes as written, and then the reappointments of Shannon Martin and Carla Pike to the Visit Arc City Board of Trustees.
I saw move, second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, any more discussion? Saying none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to old business.
Consider a resolution authorizing the city of Arc City to accept the proposals issued by B.B. Archaeological Consulting of Lawrence regarding an archaeological study at 1110,77, about to exceed $16,928.
How well addressed this? And she went out and got other proposals, and we reviewed four of them Friday. And one that really stood out above all of them was from, and I'll probably pronounce it wrong, Algonquin Consultants, who are headquartered in Miami, Oklahoma, is an American Indian-owned company. They're on site now in the county or area, and they're willing to do it for $8,760. The next one, if you just go by across the line, is $12,450. That was Historical Conservation Associates LLC. The Archaeological Consultants is $16,928. Missouri State, $17,921, and Wichita State was $18,000...
$18,000?
$18,390.
How soon can this $8,760 get started?
Did I give you any indication?
They're here, yeah.
Okay, okay. And they're on a credit list for the state too?
Yes, they are. And their proposal, they had pictures and tons of references and that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what Chad proposes is awarded to them.
Well, that being said...
Yeah, as far as timelines, it basically says here the background research part will start two to three days within notice to proceed, and then they'll have the report submitted 45 days from conclusion of the work. So assuming that December 20 is the notice to proceed, so we're just a little bit past...
That's the name of them, I don't know how to...
Have you researched this...
Algonquin?
Pardon me?
Have you researched the Algonquin Consultants? Have you researched on them?
Have you done any?
On these people? No, other than all the references they have. We just got this, we needed to get this.
That's due to us Friday.
Well, they must be fairly decent, they wouldn't be on that credit list to the state.
Right, exactly.
You know, that's what I'm saying, is as long as they're on that list, they should be fine.
That was my concern, is making sure that they're on that list, which they are.
And they're working with Dr. Ford, uh...
Yeah.
And they're a Native American-based company, as we say. Yeah, I mean, and that's what we're working with.
Well, that being said, I make a motion we approve the ALGON QUIN Consultants Incorporated, Dr. C., they use $760.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion?
I have the reservation. All the others were over $10,000, and they're $8,700. What have they not included in that?
Well, I think it's the travel and per diem, it would be involved for the others. They're on site according to discussions with them.
You have, you've had discussion with them?
No, according to...
Their proposal.
Yeah, their proposal, they meet all the requirements as far as how many...
I know they meet all the requirements.
And they're working in the area.
They actually specify how far apart they'll do each dig, each hole, the depth of it, and...
How to give money to Oklahoma. I did. I mean...
That sounds like the Indian Nation.
I don't care, it's still in Oklahoma.
So, I mean, I just don't feel like if we can do something within Kansas, but that's my opinion.
Any more discussion? Motion been made and seconded, and this is a voice vote, correct, I believe? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. Moving on. Thank you, Mike, thank you Canyon for your hard work. Moving on to new business. Oh, you're good.
So we have considered part reading of an ordinance adopting the budgeted pay plan for 2022 with a 1% cost. Mr. Merrick, Mr. Norris, if another year gone by, we are up here to propose an update to our pay ordinance, which sets the pay ranges for all the employees. We have, in this proposed pay ordinance, included a 1% cost of living adjustment, which would be given to all employees. It actually moves the pay range up by 1%, so entry level will be a little higher, maximum level will be a little higher, 1%. In addition to that, we have noticed throughout the years, and a lot recently, we have a lot of employees who are at maximum on the pay scale. And in looking at different wages, when I've done wage studies, I have noted that our pay scale is quite narrow in comparison to other municipalities and counties. And so we are proposing on the top end to increase it by 10% so that employees who are at maximum would be able to get a merit increase if warranted in 2022. If we did not do that, those that are right now at maximum would get the 1%. But then throughout 2022, everyone else is eligible for a pay increase up to 5%, but they're simply max. And those are generally going to be, obviously, your long-term experienced employees that you definitely want to reward. So it's one of our first suggestions in trying to look at our pay plan. In addition to those suggestions, we have also changed Mike's job title from management assistant to municipal project manager. The reason we did that is we monitor applications for the open position. And we're not receiving the types of applications or the quantity of applicants that we wanted to receive. And we thought, if I were an applicant and I looked at the job management assistant, what would that make me think? And in our minds, we seem to think it would be more like an administrative-type clerical job. And where this one truly is, what we changed it to on this pay ordinance of approved, is a municipal project manager. Also, we did increase the pay range from a 24 to a 28. Next, at the fire department, we added an engineer paramedic position at a range 28. We currently have an engineer EMT, but there wasn't one made for the paramedic at the time. So Chief Parks has suggested that we do that. That would be a range 28F. In doing that, we need to increase the lieutenant up one to a 29F, so that they're one level higher than the engineer paramedic. And then the captain up one range, one level, so that they're one above the lieutenant. Chief has also requested a fire marshal position, and that would be listed at a range 30, like the captains. Do you have any questions?
Randy, with all this increases to the 1% cola and all that stuff, we have that in our budget, don't we?
Correct.
Okay.
It's budgeted.
And if approved, this would become effective January 1st.
Do you have any idea what the, you said it was in the budget, but a 1% cola means?
1% cola means about $84,000.
Cost of living rate?
Yes.
Just 1%?
Yeah, I know we'd really like to do a lot more if possible, because 1% sometimes doesn't seem like a lot, but we have to understand that not only does it increase their compensation, but then it increases their FICA taxes, it increases their KPRC and KPNF, everything else. So we'd like to do more, but sometimes the budget just won't allow it.
Well, we just got to grow those more sales tax, we get more revenue coming in, where we can do more things for the employees. Well, that being said, you know, I make a motion we consider the first reading of the ordinance adopting the budget plan for 2022 with the 1% cola.
Seconding that.
We really got good employees, and it's just sad we can't do more, you know, with our budget, but it is what it is.
Kind of a fine balance between the cola, health insurance, and trying to make sure you keep the good health, or keep your good employees and keep the people you have here working for you, because you're right, they do a great job. I mean, they do, so.
It's a hard job, and I'm just proud of what you do.
That's true.
Amazing to me on every day working in human resources, the city, how we provide such a wide variety of services with so much knowledge, and it's so few people. I mean, if you think about everything they do, running in that hall, to making water him out of your faucet, to...
So few people.
Yeah, it was so few people, it's truly amazing, they're amazing.
I concur.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? Saying none, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ganger?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Wout?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think you might as well stay up there for a minute, so.
Consider a resolution adopting by reference the personnel policies and guidelines manual for the city of Arc City to determine if it is one, 2022.
I have not had a chance to read everything, and I know that HR has got some changes they want to make. I'd like to table the personnel policies and guideline manuals.
I've read through it, and I'm ready to move on with it.
Thank you.
I've read it also, and it is very in-depth.
Yes, thank you.
The changes look like they were all in conjunction with other entities. So I don't see any reason to table.
The only thing that I will say is I took it home over the weekend and spent quite some time just reviewing it because I want it to be just perfect. And I found some places where I needed to add a space or, you know, remove something, you know, nothing, nothing substantial at all, just formatting kinds of changes. So I would like to do that so it can be.
Well, I started looking at it this afternoon and I've got not quite third through it, you know, and stuff. And I really had some notes and stuff. I was taking on some things and stuff. I'm not quite ready either because I haven't, I mean, if we vote on it tonight, I haven't really had a chance to go through the whole, the whole thing. I mean, like I said, I'm already a third through it. So, and we've got two new commissioners coming on board too that probably ought to have a, you know, a thought in this thing too. So I'm, you know.
And I'm absolutely open to any questions from both visits, meeting, whatever you guys want to do so that you're completely comfortable.
So I'll make a motion that we table it?
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion? I would say though, if we table it, which I'm not opposed to, to give everyone, new people a chance to read it. I don't want this to take, I mean, I don't, I think we're all in agreement not take months, maybe a meeting.
It needs to happen in January.
Yeah, just make sure it gets done soon, so.
And we discussed that in the work session.
Yeah, we did, so. But this will be a voice vote. All those in favor of tabling say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries three one, so.
Thank you.
We do need to clarify the.
We do, I say we do.
Yeah, we are going to do that.
Yeah.
So I got a hold, this is the holiday schedule for the county. And the biggest suspicion that I could see is that sanitation being closed is difficult for our guys to do a route. They're having to go through a lot. So I think the county has a holiday schedule of 11. And that's something that everybody I've talked to has said, yeah, that's, that's fine. Including, including you. So I would make a motion that we approve mirroring the Cali County holiday schedule for 2022, which is, there's 11.
Tell me.
We're currently at 10 days, correct?
Currently at 10.
The policy was going to put it to 13, so this would make it 11.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, so this would mean that we would add Washington's birthday?
Okay.
Believe it or not, we used to have Washington's birthday.
Really? Okay. That would be the one then.
All presidents' day.
Yeah, yeah.
And now we're going to 11, right?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get that updated.
And this will accord songs with, or Cali County's thing, okay.
And we have to get this done basically before the beginning of the year anyway, so.
Right, so with a, so that we're, I mean, there's nothing coming up at the beginning of the year that isn't already on the calendar, but yes, this is something we've also talked about in work session was to do the 11.
That was a great idea.
Thank you, Randy.
So what did we, what did you have down? 13?
Yeah, so it would mean that we would take out the Juneteenth and the Columbus Day.
Those are the two banking days. They're always closed. I mean, everybody else is open anyway.
But adding Washington's birthday on February the 21st. Okay.
And that used to be President's Day.
It used to be Washington's birthday, but then it went to, then it went to all presidents.
So we, I will, seeing that we've kind of discussed this, I would like to make a motion that the city of Arkansas City 2022 holiday schedule will mirror that of the Cali County 2022 holiday schedule, in which we have 11 holiday, paid holidays, I guess.
Second.
Is that correct? Did I say that right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded. This can be a voice vote. So all those in favor of the 2022 holiday schedule, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Mara, thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify one thing real quick. We currently have a floating holiday, but it looks, and we use it a lot of times around Christmas or Easter.
Easter.
Or Good Friday. But it looks as if the county's holiday schedule, maybe they recognize the day before and the day after, they recognize the day before and after Christmas. So do we maintain the floating holiday? And just do Christmas Day?
I think, well, sometimes we even use it on Fourth of July.
Yeah, we, we use it different.
I think we maintain the floating holiday as a floating holiday because it does run into different times of holidays during the year. Or we can have it sit into a weekend or closer to a Friday.
It's kind of nice, like when you have a holiday on a Thursday or something, you can, you know.
Jennifer said it was already encompassed in there, right?
Excuse me now.
That it was already, you and Jennifer said it was already encompassed in there, the floating holiday, in the 10 that we have?
One, two, let me double check.
Got to have the floater.
Yes, it's in the 10.
Yeah, and so now you're just adding one more, so it's still there.
Yeah, it's still there.
Okay, well, it's just showing on here that county has two for Christmas. Do you guys do two days for Christmas?
It's New Year's, so Christmas Eve, they're taking Christmas Eve off and Christmas Day.
So ours would just be.
Okay. All right, so I leave the floating holiday.
Yes, this particular year, this particular year, they're doing the day before and day after.
I guess maybe that's what turns me off.
Big Saturday and Sunday. Yeah, so it applies to with it being on a weekend.
Okay, all right.
What the county has done since I've been there the last 10 years, the reason we didn't have Columbus Day, we traded that for the day after Thanksgiving. So you had those two days. Then at Christmas, we never really called it a floating holiday, but I guess you could call it that, that we got Christmas and the day before or the day after, depending upon when it fell, Christmas Day fell.
Okay, so that, that extra day on Christmas for you guys would equate to the floating.
I think it's from what it sounds like, that's where we've gotten that every year that I've been there.
All right, sounds good then. Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mara. Thank you. Thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up on new business, item number two.
Consider a resolution approving a proposal for Phase One environmental assessment located at West Madison Avenue. And I'm not going to read the rest of that.
The legalese.
And so we, like we talked about, we're looking at taking possession of an EPA super fund side, which is the Arc City dump side, I think is what their official name for the EPA is. And working with Larry and the EPA attorneys on how to move forward with that so we can keep the liability to the citizens at a very minimum if we take possession of that property. They told us to do an environmental assessment, a Phase One environmental assessment of the property, which basically just kind of is getting all the records together and, and all the previous actions that have happened on that property and just kind of combine into one report. Yeah, the importance of that is the way we take the property. As you, superfund kind of makes you nervous when you take property, but there's some, some legislation several years back now, I think early 90s, to correct some of that, where you can take property, it's either four or five different ways and not have the liability of the superfund. We are able to take it if we follow the directions of the EPA and what they're, what they're outlining here for us as bona fide purchasers, meaning we know about it, but we're not going to be liable for it if we do the right things. And this is the beginning of the right things to do, to take that without liability, without assuming any of the past liability. Well, and, go ahead, I'm sorry. We're in a good position with this one because a lot of times when people take these properties to try to do something with them, the cleanup hadn't been done. Here, I think you all know, the cleanup's done. Three, five years, there's, there's a review of that and they.
I think there's already that, that fund we got, you know, to clean it up is over a million dollars. The cost to clean that site up, I mean, that, that.
That hasn't just material, it was, it hasn't this material waste.
Yeah, but I mean, it's, it was over a million dollar cleanup is what it was way back when, when they did it, you know, through that superfund thing, so.
That site, the little picture I'm looking at, that shows the backside of the city building. That included that, the old salvage yard behind it or is?
No, the salvage yard behind it's not included in it. It's basically what it is, is the ACI properties.
And that includes, that includes Cy- Cyberton's building?
It's behind his building.
Yeah. What that entails is, the reason why I think this property could be pretty important for the city in the long term is, is extension that bypass, looping back around, back to 166. And with this property here, we can go to the state, kind of like they did the bypass and say, we've got all the property, you know, I think we've got one little piece of property we don't have, but getting this piece of property, we'll have the bulk of it where we can set it front, where we get the funding to get that extension of that bypass around. I mean, that's the key of this one. That's the reason why it's kind of important to get it.
Another question. I don't know where they plan on putting that bypass in. Does anybody know?
No, they don't.
Okay.
It's still.
Possibly it could end up taking, I don't know how semis would get turned right there without getting into the adjacent property.
Yeah.
So it's not.
It would, it would be, it would amount to probably having to use the central shop piece of property to enter into it and which would mean relocating that. But that might, it would probably be a cheaper cost to relocate that than it would be to acquire all, right away somewhere else and new houses and things of that nature. So it's just, it's just, we're already maintaining the property, we're already mowing it. Yeah. So it really doesn't.
That's them.
Doesn't change anything, just.
Yeah, I mean.
It's just legally.
On the surface changing things.
But, so basically with that, the first step we need to do is get this Phase, Phase One environmental done. And I put it on the agenda because I hadn't, didn't have anything back yet and I didn't have any idea what the cost would be, but we did get two proposals back. We got one from Allied Environmental Consultants out of Wichita. And their, their proposal is for $2,450. And we got another one from ISI Environmental, we get out of Wichita and they are $4,000. So the direction that we go up to $2,400 in the allied.
One was Wichita and the other one?
They're both, they both have Wichita offices, yeah.
Let's just do an EPA type thing?
Yeah.
Well, I make a motion, we consider the resolution approving the proposal for the Phase One environmental assessment for the property located at West Madison Avenue, Arkansas City, Kansas, and. With the legal descriptions and.
Legal description. Allied Environmental Consultants.
Yeah, and for $2,400.
$2,450.
Okay, $2,450.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any more discussion?
Make a motion.
Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five oh. Moving on to new business. Number item three.
And determinations as to the need for housing within the city of Arkansas City. Saying for prescription of real property proposed to be designated as a rural housing incentive district within the city.
Yeah, so we have the real expert here tonight to talk about it. So.
A real expert?
Yes, Dominic with Gilmore Bell. He's been assisting us with this process. And so explain what's, why is going on and why we're doing it and the benefits of it.
Thank you very much for having me. Great to mention Dominic Gilmore Bell, City's Public Council. Here to talk tonight a little bit about RHID's rural housing incentive districts. The R H I D concept is not a concept, tax include financing, but residential rather than. So what you're, what you do if you establish an RHID district is you freeze the value that that property is at the time you create the district. Taxes collected on that value continue to be distributed to all taxing jurisdictions as it has been up to now. So the city gets peace, county gets. Up to that, up to that level, that remains. Nobody drops any collection off that property. However, any increase in the value of that property from that point forward gets captured and set aside into a separate bucket, if you will. That money, which is referred to as the increment, can be used to pay eligible costs of a project. Generally speaking, eligible costs of a project are infrastructure, public infrastructure. Think of it as the same thing can I do a special assessment project for the roads, the water, the sewer, that is. However, in the last legislative session, there was a change that allowed for vertical improvements to be paid for with this increment. But that's limited to second floor and higher of a building that's greater than 25 years old in a downtown central business district. So if you have those buildings that are greater than two floors, that are located downtown and are more than 25 years old, you can capture some of this and use that to make improvements to the building itself to spur redevelopment of that building for residential purposes.
We got about 50 of them.
I was like, they're zeroing in on us.
Yes.
Yes, so, so it really widens the eligible uses of that and lets you pay for a wide range of things that you would not be able to pay for in a brand new, you know, residential housing development, which would be limited to, you know, horizontal infrastructure, which is a bit number whatsoever. Here, it opens it up, it does let you in order to kind of spur that redevelopment and try to revitalize downtowns. Cities with 60,000 or less population are eligible for the RHID program, Kansas. And the first step in the process is really got to figure out, okay, where is my eligible area? That's what we're here to do tonight. The first step is to make a finding of certain housing, housing needs for the community. And once you make that finding, you send that up to the Secretary of Commerce. And the Secretary of Commerce either agrees or disagrees with those findings. Assuming they agree, now that map, that area laid out in the resolution that we have before you tonight, now it is eligible to become at some point in the future RHID district. It is not creating the district tonight. You're not freezing any values tonight. What you're doing is that first step to say, okay, later on, if we get a project for one of these buildings, then at that point, we're done with this first step with Secretary of Commerce assuming approval. And we can go in at that point and then move a little quicker to get.
I got a question.
Yeah.
Say, you know, we got, say downtown, we go two blocks downtown or whatever we consider downtown is for that rural district. But, but, and we get that set up, but, but that doesn't freeze the taxes until we get somebody ready to do something, right? It's just that building by itself.
Generally speaking, what we've seen on these, you can do it two ways. You can either, on a project by project basis, take the step that we're taking tonight or considering tonight. And say you have one project, you can start with that one building, send that one building up to the Secretary of Commerce. They can approve it and then you can move forward.
But we can put all the, all the buildings in that one district.
What we have in front of us is yes, all buildings to be eligible, kind of get that first.
Right.
Check so that later it's a little more nimble.
See, the important, it did the wrong thing because I think they're the first ones done this. And what they done was up there, they just did one building. They just didn't set up a district. They just took one building and set, and did that, you know? And I think that's wrong in the sense that we all have it, the whole thing set up, you know? I mean, just, you know, in that.
Makes it more appealing to those who may want to develop.
Exactly right.
May want to come in, their building is already set up.
Exactly right. That's the point I'm trying to say.
Yes, it just takes that first step, checks the first box. We'll still have further steps to go. Yes, it it just takes that first step, checks the first box, we'll still have further steps to go. You know, the next step would be if a project is identified specifically, and then we come back and and you have a resolution to call a public hearing. And you know, within 30 to 70 years after that, you can call a public hearing, hold it. After the public hearing, then you can adopt a plan and establish that district. At that point, everything's frozen.
You know, and and the the thing I like about this plan is a lot of our buildings downtown are vacant. People that own some, in other words, they don't live here in town. And I think that that once we get this thing set up and and things starting to happen, I think you might have investors come in and try to buy some of these buildings, you know, to take advantage of what you're trying to say. That tax is up to 25 years, isn't it?
That is correct. Eligible for up to 25 years.
Yeah.
And and the eligibility of cost and the term. That's that's the statutory limits. Nobody can always decide to do something less than that. The project comes and you say, I I like this project, I I don't think I like it for 25 years, do it for 15, do it for 10.
But you have a choice to do that.
You you have a choice to do that.
Yeah, that's what's good about them. Somebody buying, they have a choice what they want to do.
So my question is the historical district that's already been identified, is this going to conflict? Or is it going to run alongside happily?
This is, this should be a separate process from from other districts you've created now. This is a property tax based setup. So to the extent that there would be like a neighborhood revitalization district or something like that, that also would utilize property tax dollars, you could have some conflicts because you're trying to spend the same dollars twice. But to the extent that any other districts that you've set up are not funded through property tax, that that would be a complimentary.
And we don't have any of those districts, do we, Randy?
Have a start.
I think the historical district is if you're going to modify a building, you you can use this money to remodel or do what you need to within the building, but you may have to keep the facade or certain, you may have to keep some of the historical.
Okay.
To which is different than.
Yeah.
They're two different things. I think I could go fix the building up with this process, the historical district may say, and Josh, but you have to keep this brick or this, you may have to keep
That's true.
Some of the outside with it, but it won't affect the the financing of it.
But we can, if I remember correctly, appeal or the building owner can appeal to the state and then the city commission.
Yeah, but I thought, Josh, we're, we don't have to go to state with city commission now and handle some of a lot of this stuff, can't we? I mean, did we do a resolution to do that? I mean, way back when?
Yes, technically, that's true.
Okay.
What happens is somebody disagree with the findings of the board of state or whatever. They can appeal that decision to you. And the only thing you have to do is submit your findings to the state.
Okay.
Yeah, the historical district.
I know we separate, I had a problem with that.
Affect each other.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, because we did that resolution that one.
They may have to design it around the historical parameters, but the finance.
Cost to me that may or may not be eligible.
Right, right.
It may not be an eligible cost for RHID purposes. But other costs of the projects. It may not, you know, line up one law, no, I take the money and and make these improvements that you're otherwise required to make. But it is some available funds that would help with the.
Just another tool.
Yeah, that being said, I think it's going to be a wonderful tool, and I think it's going to create a lot of we get this thing set up, a lot of these people that don't that owns buildings that don't live here. They get more investors coming, a lot of these builders, be able to make upstairs housing and downstairs, you know, retail or whatever, you know, it's going to. That's sort of way this downtown is going to have to grow. We're going to have to get these buildings occupied one way or the other, and this is, I think, a good plan to do that for investors outside the area to come in, that that helps do that. That being said, I make a motion, we consider a resolution making certain findings and terminations as the need of housing within city of Arkansas City and setting forth a legal description of real property proposed to be designated as rural housing incentive district within the city.
I second it.
Double second, huh?
Motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. All opposed, motion carries 5-0.
Thank you for explaining that. I'm glad you explained that because it gets, I mean, the way you explained it, I can understand it really well now.
It's nice that you're the expert.
So how long will it take to get us to the next level where we go forward?
After this process, we'll we'll publish the resolution. And then we'll send it up to the Secretary of Commerce, and then it's just a matter of kind of waiting for that, people wanting to come back. We've seen that come back anywhere from, you know, a couple of weeks to maybe a month and a half.
Can we hurry it along?
And then next up at that point is, you know, if there's an individual project that's ready to go.
Okay.
And we've worked to develop the project plan and those documents, and then it'll take about another two months at that point because you got to go through public hearing. And after the public hearing, we'll note that the the county and the school district have a veto power. They set this up because you're capturing their increment as well. And so after you hold that public hearing, there's 30 days for the county or the school district to veto it and and quash that specific district. So it's not for this step, but but down the line, I'm curious, so, you know, there's.
So in other words, we get all set up and get somebody to come in, going to spend a bunch of money on that thing, the county could come in and stop us from doing that?
They they could because you're you're saying we're going to capture your county increment and use that for this purpose. And so they have, they they've gotten ability to step in there and so, you know, usually we we always advise and encourage that the the potential developers reach out and and discuss and.
You would, you would suspect that a lot of those other entities would probably not do that just for the fact that you're developing and bringing people into their.
County.
County or the community and potentially into their school district for kids, so usually I I would suspect it wouldn't unless something major happened.
It it would be very similar to the neighborhood revitalization that 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 they that the county and the school both signed on to. It's just something we'd have to educate them on and make sure they understood this. Um, I doubt that there would be any pushback from those entities. There wasn't on the NRP when we. That, so. It'd probably be fine. But there's always a chance.
Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate your help. Have a good Christmas. New business item number four.
Consider a resolution amending the environmental number 665 concerning the composition of the Northwest Community Center Advisory.
Don't that end you? Any more discussion?
Do we need any more discussion?
Anybody opposed to it?
Nope.
I will move that we approve resolution amending the resolution number 665 concerning the composition of the Northwest Community Center Advisory Board. Motion been made and seconded, although, oh, any more discussion first off? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Motion carries 5-0. Next up.
Consider a resolution approving the execution and delivery of necessary agreements to maximize the city of Arkansas City's allocation of opioid settlement funds.
You'll get to talk a little bit about that on Friday. Okay, basically, there's if this isn't the biggest litigation in the country's history, it's close to it. And so you you've probably heard something about it. Anyway, how do you get this done? And a lot of us have been scurrying to try to figure that out. You have to register, Randy got us registered. Fortunately, our Attorney General has put together a team to litigate some of this. And the benefit that is to us is it's we don't have to have counsel, and we have to move by year's end anyway. So a lot of the larger cities and some of their city attorneys have gotten together and done some work and put together an ordinance that's very helpful. With the league's help too, some of you familiar with the name Amanda Stanley, counsel that's leaving to go to Topeka, she was in on it. And one of our neighbors to the north, Derby City Attorney, was in on it, Obolyn Park. They've put together a nice resolution, which I have made available, I don't know if you've been able to see that, it might have been in the packet, that will get us in line to have the Attorney General's assistance, and that's my recommendation, to use them rather than any other outside counsel, who would incidentally take a fee. Basically, the goal is to have everybody that can to join this, and the more they join, the more the money is available for all of the municipalities, meaning county governments and city governments in the state of Kansas. That is a a very poor overview of what this massive thing is, but you can realize how hard it is to get money like that out. Anyway, so the Attorney General's office has already gotten some of these things settled, gotten some monies to different places. And we need to, well, my recommendation is to to join them and their efforts, and I think they will be the best.
What can we use that money for?
Well, there are going to be some limitations for it, and to tell you the truth, I was so busy thinking about how do we get this far, that I don't know that I can enumerate those for you. But it's like other grants and things that you get where, you know, there's, this is specific to opioids. Does that mean it's just about opioids? Technically, yes, but there's going to be a lot of, that that can cover a lot of broad categories. So I can't give you a really perfect answer as tonight as to every little thing you can use it for. I think the first step for tonight is let's make sure we get in the pot to get the money, and then we'll use it.
Well, my my, I'm just, I'm just talking out loud myself only. But that would be, if we could use it, that'd be a good thing to to use it for that suicide thing that Chief talked about.
And that may absolutely.
You know, because it's, you know, you have you have suicides, but but you also, it's probably drug related anyway, a lot of it is and stuff. So if we can get some money, that'd help his program out too. I'm just throwing it out here, you know, I mean, it's just I think, I think his thing is a really good program and you need to get more funding for it, you know, this might be one way of doing it, I don't.
It could very well be. I don't, I don't want to promise that or.
I understand, I just, I'm just, I'm just talking out loud, I don't, you know, nobody knows until you look into it.
First, I'd like to move, we consider a resolution approving the execution of agreements to maximize the city of Arkansas City's allocation of the opioid settlement funds. Second.
But you'll look into it, see how we can use it.
Absolutely.
Okay.
So he can. Sure, once it comes out, they'll have a list.
They will.
Motion been made and seconded. Any more discussion?
Well, I'm going to ask Chief Park something after we vote. I just want to ask him.
All right, sounds good. All the no more discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries 5-0.
I'm going to put you in the hot seat, Chief. Oh, really? Does the fire department or the EMS department get funding from the state for overdoses of opioids now? Okay, just wonder, just a question.
Yeah, one of the things that as part of this is we're going to have to, we've had $500 or more a year in costs associated with opioid. And overdose, PMAs respond to overdoses is one of those things, police dealing with.
It was kind of like, they have treatment, I was wondering if the treatment they give, they they have that. Am I correct in understanding that? If that was covered under anything in the states, but so it's not right now. No, I think, okay, we just bring that out of our funds, okay.
We're done?
City manager updates, there's no more new business, so.
Uh, so the Arkansas City Chamber of Commerce will host a cookie swap 10 a.m. on the 23rd at the chamber office, so bring your favorite cookies and trade away. They'll all be closed on Friday, 25th and Friday, the 31st.
We will have a workstation on 31st.
Yeah, Friday is November 24th. Yeah, Friday, December 24th.
Whatever, yeah, whatever's correct.
Yes.
Saturday is Christmas, and then next Friday for New Year's.
I want to make sure you knew which day you're going to be off.
Okay. I'll just show up. Cali County Legislative Committee will meet noon on January 4th at the Winfield Chamber Office. Next, City Study Commission or City Commission Study Session will be the 7th at noon on office. And then the City Commissioner's Annual Reorganizing Meeting will will be scheduled, rescheduled from the January to January 10th. That's, you know, normal after an election, that's.
We will have a, we will have a meeting on January the 4th.
Correct, because of the election year and the way our ordinance is set up.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the next one will be the.
Then I go back to the.
So we'll have two back to back weeks?
Okay, or the 10th and then the 18th.
Okay.
Sure call, Jake.
Okay.
You need to get paid more for that. Yeah, we need double pay duty on that.
And I wanted to kind of tell you guys about something exciting, another downtown thing that's going on that may be helpful. Josh and I had a meeting today. There's a a group of from K-State and South Dakota State. And they're going to be bringing a group of students down and using our downtown as a project on from February 3rd to February 6th. It's architecture students, the the building architecture and landscape architecture, graphic designers. They'll be getting public input. What the what they're going to do is just kind of do us a visioning study of our downtown with public input and then present some visioning ideas that could possibly be used in the future. And so just kind of keep that in mind, that'll be, they'll be coming. It's really, it's no cost to us, it's a two colleges cooperating, working together, it's a student project, and there'll be quite a few staff members. Probably a lot more staff than students, actually. But it's kind of a, it's kind of an exciting thing, and it really ties in well with the Main Street program that we're applying for, and then also the RHID, so kind of some neat, neat things that can, you know.
We need to do what they get.
What's that?
We need to see what they get and what they show us. Possibilities.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Which being from South Dakota, probably anything we have will be better, so.
It might be different from what they're used to.
That'll be exciting, so.
Right.
You guys have anything?
Motion for German.
Motion was made and seconded for the German. Anything, any more discussion? Any from you guys? Not. All in favor, say aye. Merry Christmas.
Yeah.
Happy New Year.